Counsel, was there any comments on any member of the council?
Real quick, thank you for your comments in regards to Valle de Oro. I would recommend, if you could just get a member of staff and sheriff, whether it's myself, the mayor, or another council member, be willing to go out there and make sure they know the council, you know, is there to hear them, to hear their concerns, in addition to what you've already done. I'm more than willing to do that and report back. Regarding Ottena, I mean, Ottena is outstanding organization. I know the mayor and I serve on the Budget Committee, and it truly is a matter of money, dollars, and then balancing the needs of business community as well as those, you know, the library has mentioned, and we do have a strong, your consumers, the citizens here, that may have different priorities than what the business community has, and our lack of funding to do everything at one time. I would like the chief, there was a mention of you guys, just for the fun of it, giving tickets. I have a feeling that you guys have better things to do than to arbitrarily walk around, so I would like for you to give back a memo to the council, and what your enforcement is and why you're doing it, because my gut is, you don't do things arbitrarily or just for fun, but I would like you have the opportunity to be heard on that matter. In regards to Benz versus Valley Calgrove, I hear the comparison, and I know that was a big issue, Valley Calgrove. The difference, I believe, is Valley Calgrove was the Hatfields versus McCoys. There was two different groups on two sides of the issue from the very beginning, and a major public outcry. The difference here is, we had a few gentlemen, a few residents that came at Benz, were tenacious, kept coming, and the council actually acted against staff's recommendation. We acted against Andrew Ye to be responsive to the community. And so when you came forward and asked for a change, we went against Andrew's recommendation, staff's recommendation, we then created the public outcry. There's a big difference. In Valley Calgrove, there was a public outcry, we tried to make it so there wasn't. Here, we kept adding things to the council to be responsive, and ultimately, we created a public outcry. And through our travel commi measures, we now have disrupted the rest of the neighborhood who's coming forward and saying, "What are you guys doing? You're making this more difficult than it should be." And so now, we've created this public outcry, which we're now trying to be responsive to and tell staff, "Hey, fix it," even though they told us in the beginning, "Be careful if you do this, you're going to create public outcry." So, in being responsive, we stubbed our toe, and now we're trying to do our best to remedy that situation. And I would like to ask the city clerk, there was a woman here in regards to Benz Road, I am concerned, she made, she stated that she made a public information request. I know when you make a public information request, you give your name, address, phone number. She said that she was looking for public policy. If you can give me receipts of those things that she requested, I may be able to assist her. Maybe we can get her name, and I'm more than willing to help her if she made those requests.
Can I just mention something? I wanted to, I think the ladies left from Valle de Oro, and they were talking about a witness protection program, and I know that when I was on the Sheriff's Advisory Committee before I was elected, we initiated this program, which is 284 to tip, to report crime anonymously, and I know that there were signs all over the place, and I haven't seen those signs lately. I don't know if they still exist, but I'm wondering if we don't need to, I'm assuming at the sheriff's station that this line still, I know in 2007 it was active, I'm assuming it still is. Is there someone here from the captain? Chief, good.
Yes, ma'am. The line is still active. I believe the issue that they're talking about with witness protection is totally separate issue. That's about how to report anonymously crimes or incidents that are occurring. Witness protection is when we have a case, open case, and we're trying to prosecute individuals, and we have to protect the victims or witnesses in those cases, and that's handled through the DA's office. And I believe that's been, that information has been passed on to them.
Okay, but, okay, so, I just wanted to make sure that they are aware that they can call this hotline, and it is anonymous, and if the program is still exists, then maybe we need to start marketing this. I know that we put it in the mayor's safety program in that brochure.
That line is still active. We also have online tipping, where you can report incidents online, and we also have, you can call the station and report something that's going on, and we can withhold your name that way. So there's at least three to four different ways that you can report crime anonymously.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy that we're working with the neighborhood on that. That's all.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to committee reports, and I'll begin with Lorraine.
Thank you, Mayor. While this last week, Mayor Keller and I, and City Manager Ken Pulskamp and Mike Murphy traveled to Washington DC to work on HR 5887, and I just want to say that our mayor did just an outstanding job. We met with 13 legislators or their staff of the Energy and Mineral Resources Committee, and shared with them the information regarding the bill and some of our support, answered their questions, and enlisted feedback from the different members, and I was very impressed with how well received you were. I would say that the mayor was very cogent on answering all the questions. People were genuinely receptive in listening to our city's needs. This is a very, very bipartisan issue, and extremely supported from all sides. We met with Senator Diane Feinstein's staff, and I think that she had her staff get the information from us that will allow her to work through this issue. We also met with Congressman Keon and the city of Victorville came back and was supportive, and I think they met with Congressman Lewis, and we certainly appreciated their support. The representative from C-Max also was with us through most of the meetings and did a good job of representing the support from the company's position on how well this benefits their company and how well it works for our city and our community. I think that there was a great deal gained through this trip, and I look at, I look forward to us getting feedback over the next few weeks. Just some of the people that have written support letters for, we have a unanimous support from the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy has voted unanimously, Safe Action for the Environment, Increstrian Trails International, the, both the Sierra Club of Santa Clarita Valley and the Antelope Valley, the Los Angeles County Democratic Party, our Senator George Runner, the Santa Clarita Valley Industrial Association, the city of Victorville, the list goes on, it's growing. We ask you to continue to join with us and let us support. We're very, very hopeful that we can continue to move forward in a positive way, and I think the mayor should make a couple comments on his thoughts on this. I must say that in all our years, nine years of working on this, this was one of the most valuable trips, and one of the most important times in meeting with all the different committee members, and I certainly applaud Congressman Keon's staff. They were right there, working through this process, all the way through, and are diligently dealing with the process. It's a great bill, it's important to the entire future of everyone in this valley, and I applaud the city staff's effort to continue to work on this. Mayor?
Thank you, and I will make a couple of comments, but I'm going to do those, I'm going to wait and make them in a few moments, if you don't mind. I'm going to go, did you have other comments you wanted to make?
I do have an adjournment I would like to do.
Please do.
We lost this week, this last week, Odie Fox. Odie Fox passed away, he was 93 years old. He was sort of a pioneer in the Santa Clarita Valley. He owned Fox Feed and operated the store for 33 years. He was a very interesting, colorful man, and if you had animals, you've probably been in Fox Feed at some time. He had two sons, his sons Jerry and Doug, and he had a daughter, Darlene McClellan, and I want to give the family from the city our deepest sympathy. His service will be this Thursday in Lancaster at the Forest Square Church, and if you need more information, please call Fox Feed out there in Canyon Country. He will be certainly missed and lost, he was a really incredible part of our community.
Thanks, Lorraine. Lori?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple things. Alan Firdman mentioned a program that we're working on with his neighborhood, the Extreme Neighborhood Makeover, and Alan, you've lived there for, what, 43 years? So he's lived there his whole life, and I think he brings up a good point, that it's just that the neighborhood could get better, and when you're 50 years old, you could always use a, you know, a spa day or a facelift, so I'm excited about it. I am thrilled that you invited us to your neighborhood, that's how it feels, and I'm really, really looking forward to it. I think this is going to be a great event, and I'm excited that your neighbors are participating and on board with this, and I think this is going to be a great template for some things we can do elsewhere in the community, so thank you for that. A couple things, I wanted to say thank you to our fire department, I don't know if Luke is here, but there have been a couple quick fires put out right away. I think every morning, I get up and I look outside and scan the horizon, because it's that time, and you read about what's happening elsewhere in California, and I'm so thankful for us being so proactive and getting it out before it goes anywhere, so knock on wood, let's keep that up. And just lastly, I wanted to mention, you know, gas prices are horrible, and it's hot, so don't leave Santa Clarita, stay home and go to the Aquatic Center. I went there last week with my son Davis and two of his friends, and although Mara and Elena were brave enough to go off the high dive, I was not, but it was packed, and it was wonderful, and I mentioned to some of the staff that it's really an example of what's best about Santa Clarita. So I encourage you to go, take your kids, your neighbors, your grandkids, the Aquatic Center's a wonderful place, and really, just makes me proud to live in this community. So, hope I'll see you guys there next time.
Thank you, Lori. Marshall?
Hi. I wanted to mention a couple of things. Back in April, I was a hearing officer for the Metro TDA Article 8 funds, and that's the California Transportation Development Act, which was enacted in 1972, and it provides the major source of state funds to support public transit services. And this hearing was to talk about unmet transit needs, and also Rick Gould served on that as a hearing officer as well. And one of the things that I'm very pleased about, of being able to be a part of this, is that we just had a meeting to discuss proposed findings and recommended actions, and one of the things that has, that I think has gone unnoticed a little bit, we failed to make a lot of noise about needs from the Antelope Valley to downtown Los Angeles, so a part of this proposed findings and recommended actions is now in the report to request better connectivity from the Antelope Valley to Los Angeles. And our city does a terrific job in providing bus service, and we have great metro link service, it's just not enough. So, I'm hoping that by this, we would be able to get more funding to be able to provide these services. And also, I know that the Valley Industrial Association in our chambers has been very concerned about people who live in the Antelope Valley not being able to have the transportation during the hours that they need it in order to get to their job. And so, while we do a fantastic job there as well, there's always, we're always hopeful to get better funding and more funding so that we can provide that service, and so that's one of the reasons I'm really happy that I was able to be a part of that. I wanted to mention the, I just, I went to the ballet this past Saturday. We are so lucky to have the ballet company performing the way they do at the Performing Arts Center. They did three separate pieces, they had a guest artist, and the last piece was done, it was actually choreographed by the students themselves, and it was absolutely brilliant. They have a fantastic arts director there and choreographer for the ballet, and it was just a fantastic evening. If you have an opportunity, I would say, please, next time there's a ballet, go and see it, because I know we, as a city, always want to support cultural arts, and that's part of the program that is available. And I wanted to bring up something now, because I think this is going to be something that's going, we're going to have to deal with for, in November. I know that there's the high-speed rail system, and we, as a city, took a position of support for the studies, the environmental studies and such, and I know that they're listing us as supporting the system. And we may have a problem with this, because come November, there's going to be a bond on the November ballot, and I want to make sure that if they're listing us as supporting this, this bond, that we truly do support this steel-wheel rail system. It's my understanding, we will not have a station here in Santa Clarita, and we don't have the information on the environmental impacts yet, as going through our area. Also, there is, there's something called AB 3034, which is actually taking and changing the priority of where this will be, and we are not even a part of that, but we're going to be asked to support the state bond. So, I'm really hoping that the council agrees that we can have staff spend some time to find out, first of all, what do we support? Are we going to continue to support this? And I just think we need more information on this now, because it's moving along in Sacramento, and I think we need to find out if we're going to, if this is something we really want to support or not.
Thank you. Frank?
I wanted to first recognize in our audience tonight Randy Crissall with the Auto Spa. Randy, thank you. True, you talk about corporate giving, through the Auto Spa, he's given, I dare say, hundreds of thousands of dollars to local charities, youth groups, high schools, junior highs, real giving spirit. So Randy, thank you very much, it's great to see you here tonight. I also want to congratulate the Amsler family who own Salt Creek, and Mr. Ventures, the Boys and Girls Club Auction, which was held this past weekend. What a charitable event for such a worthy cause, both the Boys and Girls Club in Canyon Country, New Hall, and especially to all those residents that attend, just their huge heart and their giving spirit. Even at $5 a gallon, they probably beat the records they've had in the past, I'm sure you guys know, but they, it's such a great event, I encourage people to attend. I do want to forewarn everyone in the audience, when I first ran for office, my son Nick was three years old, today he passed his driver's test, so he's on his own, starting probably tomorrow on the road, so if you see him, give him some clearance, it's his first time to go solo, so I'm sure he's listening, going, "Ah, Dad." And lastly, I had a meeting last week with Brad Barons with the Senior Center, his public information officer, and our public information officer, Gail Ortiz, and we were speaking of the Meals on Wheels program, and just the generosity of Juan Alonso?
Yes.
Juan Alonso, I just Juan, who owns La Shen, and for just years and years, he has so graciously given his home, his property, to the Meals on Wheels program. This coming year, September 20th, that event will be at the medical, Man Medical Center, where so many of our functions take place now. And we were talking on how our mayor emeritus, Joanne Darcy, for so many years, it was a personal quest of hers to make that event successful, and how it was her driving force behind it, that for so many years, just gave so many hundreds and just thousands of residents those meals, that personal contact. And so I looked at the council, and each of us has events that we host, we sponsor, we give so generously time, money, and just energy, I can, I know each of us can name three or four organizations we support. And I threw out to Gail, and I'm going to ask the council to indulge me, how great it would be this coming September, that the five of us host this coming event at the new site, that we honor Joanne Darcy and all the previous council members that came before us, but specifically Joanne for her work for Meals on Wheels. Brad was all for it, I think Gail has sort of taken on the reins as the person that will be the support staff for it to get it going, but how nice it would be for us, maybe this event, the five of us act as the host, hostesses, and really, in the spirit of Joanne Darcy, really kick it off this new venue and make it go, so.
How do you say no to that?
Well, I don't think we're saying no. So the wine auction is moving over to Ban Biomedical because it's gotten so big.
Yeah.
And do we still have Juan's fabulous French cooking?
That I do not know, but I-
We'll miss Juan's cooking. That's a great idea, Frank.
Right, well, I have worked that event every single year for, ever since I think I've been here, and so it's a worthwhile event, and it needs all the support it can get.
Thank you, Anna Frank.
I think you might want to do some special acknowledgement of Juan's years of having it-
Correct.
-up at, up at Uppsier Highway at the Raptor Restaurant, which has just been unbelievable.
La Shen West or something.
Yeah.
Great. I'm sure Gail will be contacting all five of us.
Thank you. Just if I may now, at this time, follow up with a couple of comments that Lorraine made relevant to our trip to Washington DC last week on the C-Mex matter, and absolutely what she said, it's good news, folks. I, I'm proud to tell you, this city is doing everything in our power, and have been for a long time, but we're kind of in one of those modes now, where things are kind of clicking along rather quickly, and if you've been keeping count, we've had, I think, three trips to Washington DC in about the last two months, and we'll be going right back again probably within the next three or four weeks. I just want to really particularly compliment, it's not just the community, it is the community, it's not just Mike Murphy, our intergovernmental relations officer that has done a phenomenal job of coordination and staying on top of this matter, it's not just Cy Jamison, our Washington DC consultant, and I got to tell you, I'm going to include the people in C-Mex, and that might seem a little strange based upon many of the comments of the past, but I will tell you, they're on board, and they're working shoulder to shoulder with us on this legislation in Washington DC. I could go on, of course, our Congressman Buck McKean and his staff have done a phenomenal job of giving us the insight and the leadership that we needed in Washington. I tell you, though, as citizens, we don't normally, I don't, not being a wise guy, we're nonpartisan, we're not elected if we're Democrat, Republican, Independent, or whatever, and I like that. I think we're all adult enough to recognize there's philosophically probably some different perspectives when, depending on which party you feel comfortable with, and that's okay. But I got to tell you, sometimes it gets a little frustrating around Sacramento and Washington DC, when you find so much partisan politics. You know, "It's a Democratic bill, we're not going to support it." "No, it's a Republican bill, I'm not going to support it." How about supporting it because it's good for our citizens? And I will tell you that we have, maybe with not quite that level of energy, but as we meet the various congressional staff and/or congressional members, and I will, I want to specifically mention one, and I could go on, but we've got other things to do tonight, obviously, but had an opportunity to meet directly with Congressman Patrick Kennedy of Rhode Island. And I really didn't anticipate our, having a direct meeting with he and a member of his staff, but I'll tell you, I sincerely, sincerely appreciated his warmth of receiving us, listening to us, and certainly, we left his office feeling very good. And we have been working with all of our strength to ensure that this bill goes through as a nonpartisan bill. That's a little Pollyannish, I mean, obviously, it comes from a specific party, in this case, we all know Buck is a Republican, but we're doing everything we can. But we, as citizens, remember, be it in our leadership in Sacramento or Washington, we need people there that genuinely will recognize that our decisions need to be made based upon the needs of our citizens, not whether or not the other party introduced a bill or not, and that's one little thing, no extra charge for that, but I get a little frustrated when you, when you find those kinds of obstacles and challenges in front of you. I will assure you, and what a laundry list that Lorraine articulated of support, and you know what, all of these organizations so far, I don't think there's one of them where the vote has not been unanimous. Entire boards have been supporting, and I'm, forgive me, I'm getting a little optimistic here, I'm getting pretty excited. I think, I think we're certainly hopeful, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we're going to win this battle for this community, and please, stay, stay on board with us, and don't give up, we're not.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I just, in reflecting on Councilmember McLean's comments on the rail line, I really don't want that to fall through the cracks, and I think it's really critical that the staff, which probably they, they're already doing, but I want to make sure that we have all the information. I was disappointed to not see that there was going to be a stop in Santa Clarita, because in my estimation, the most critical thing in the future for people is that to be able to get to their job with mass transit, and we certainly have enough population that I would think, as many people that still, as much as we've done job-housing balance, there's still people having to leave the Valley of Transportation out to a job somewhere else, so I think we really need to take a look at that for the long term.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment also, there's, there's two high-speed proposals. One is the high-speed rail, which is the steel rail, and the other one is the high-speed Maglev. Now, the Maglev does propose to have a station here in Santa Clarita, so, just for your information.
Okay, if I may, I'd like to move on to the one-year anniversary of Enterprise Zone. July 1st will mark one year since Santa Clarita was designated as a California Enterprise Zone by Governor Schwarzenegger. This program really is a big deal for our local businesses, as it has saved them money, which is especially important with the slowdown in the economy that we are all experiencing. To put it simply, businesses can get tax credits in two ways, for hiring qualified employees and for making qualified purchases. I would like to share some of the highlights from Santa Clarita's first year as an enterprise zone. In May, the city issued its 100th employee voucher for a business hiring a qualified employee. Each of these vouchers are worth approximately $37,000 over a five-year period. Issuing 100 vouchers represents a potential savings of over 3.7 million to businesses in the city, and that's right, 3.7 million. Approximately 40 businesses in our city have benefited from the Enterprise Zone by saving real money. Some of these include Salt Creek Grill, that Frank had mentioned earlier, US Healthworks, Valencia Acura, Frontier Toyota, Hyatt Hotels, John Paul Mitchell Systems, AV Equipment Rental, and Aerospace Dynamics. If you have a business in Santa Clarita, this is a program you need to know about. Go to the city's website at Santa-Clarita.com for information on the Enterprise Zone, or you can call our Economic Development Division at 255-4347, and find out how you can save your business money. Couple of other things, if I may, ladies and gentlemen. A week ago Saturday, I had a chance to go to a residence in the New Hall area where the Habitat for Humanity was assisting one of the fire victims. Matter of fact, and I'm going to apologize in advance, is there a name, Turner, the gentleman that was burned that worked at Heads Up?
Tindell.
One more time.
Tindell.
Tindell?
Tindell.
Tindell, that's it, thank you. He, as a matter of fact, he was not in a tennis, because he had to go to the hospital for another surgical procedure due to the burns he received in trying to deal with a fire and save animals. But I got to tell you, this Habitat for Humanity, what a phenomenal organization. But I got to tell you, this Habitat for Humanity, what a phenomenal organization. And I really commend those that give the support to that organization, to give it the ability to function so effectively in providing opportunities for people that are perhaps in financial difficulties, to have a roof over their head. They have a program whereby they give 500 hours of sweat equity, if you will, but they get a 30-year loan at no interest. And these kinds of opportunities, only here in America, ladies and gentlemen. In this particular situation, it was a revitalization, if you will, of a residence that was in serious disrepair, but our good friends at the gas company, Tony Tortaglia and a number of his associates, came out and personally got involved, not only with their money, but their time to assist with Habitat for Humanity. And my sincere congratulations to all involved, what great work, couldn't help but fellow citizen. Had an opportunity, I've done this before, enjoy doing it, had a great opportunity to visit a little place the other day, over at the Sand Canyon Shopping Center. That's where Von's Market is over there, Sand Canyon in Solidad. If you got a little hungry sometime, stop by the Golden Walk. What great people, what great Asian food. I guarantee you won't be disappointed, and it's not one of those meals that, you know, that'll tell you to leave your wallet, so get over there and see our good friends at the Golden Walk. And in closing on our public comments, I want to extend condolences to Mrs. Delaplane. Mrs. Delaplane is my neighbor, she lost her husband a couple of weeks ago, he's been my neighbor for 29 years, Ed Delaplane, and he's a great neighbor, good community member, retired pilot with Delta Airlines, but God bless the Delaplane family, and I know it was just a huge loss, and certainly is for me, as a good neighbor and others in our immediate neighborhood. Okay, shall we move on? Time for the executive meeting, and counsel, we had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Is there anything? I think, Marcia, you wanted to pull items six and eight?
Yes, and then when we get to item number 15, I would like to have us take a separate action on the open space.
Well, we'll deal with that when we get past the consent.
Okay, I'm aware, I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Anything else by the council?
I have one request to speak under item 11.
Number 11?
Yes.
Shall we go to item number six?
Thank you. That is just a clarification?
You know, let's strike that, let me get approval of the agenda first.
Okay.
Apologize. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
Hearing no objections, so ordered, approval of the amendments of June the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
And hearing no objections, so ordered. Before we go to that still, I'm going to hold off. Marcia, we've got the redevelopment agency.